Call this meeting to order of the Morris Township Planning Board, May 2nd, 2022. Statement of adequate notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the board in preparation of the 2022 annual meeting notice, which sets forth the daytime and place of this meeting, and by properly posting such notice and forwarding the notice to those designated newspapers and persons requesting meeting notices. Moreover, in order to comply with the National Estate declarations of the emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Municipal Land use Law, the Open Public Meetings Act, and the Emergency Remote Meeting Protocols for Local Public Bodies, this meeting is being held virtually on a web-based platform with remote public access. Would you please all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. On the roll call, Sonya?
Mr. Nun?
Here.
Mr. By?
Here.
Mr. Dorothy?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Quillen?
Here.
Ms. McKay?
I did not see her, no.
No, okay. Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Ms. Laney?
Here.
Mr. Fischinger?
Here.
Mr. Slate?
Here.
Ms. Wolf?
Here.
And Sonia Santiago here. Did I miss anybody?
Thank you. First order of business this evening is a memorializing resolution on the Morris County Golf Club. Nina, do you want to summarize this first?
Sure. That was a halfway house slash administration building and cold storage building, the renovation of the existing maintenance building in addition of new material storage bins. There are also additional site improvements. The draft resolution did go to council as well as our board professionals and all of the revisions that were suggested were made, so the board can vote on it.
Board members, any comments or questions on the resolution? Any additions, changes?
Chairman, I have one. I think I found a typo.
Typos?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
On page nine, item 26, line three, if you, it's the first sentence of item number 26. It refers to structures closer to the right-of-way than the proposed building. I think I should say the principal building.
Where are you looking? I'm sorry.
Item number, item number 26.
The first word of that line, proposed.
First word of that line.
Gotcha.
Should it be principal?
I don't even have that in my copy, I don't think. Oh, I see. I'm not sure. I was not at that meeting, so if the board members have any recollection.
Okay, the clubhouse building exists. It's not a proposed building, so.
It's the clubhouse, so it makes sense.
Principal, okay.
Says that is the clubhouse, so that's not proposed.
Okay.
Good eye, George.
Yeah.
Any other, yeah. Any other comments or observations?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. It's not directly related to this, but just when I look at page six, 15D reference to the Do Not Plant List, a question from Mr. Slate, is that now posted on our website?
I honestly don't know. I'd have to check with Virginia, but I'll make a note to check.
Okay, because from that meeting to now, it was passed, and hopefully it will be posted on our website for future applicants.
Okay, good. Anybody else? If not, I'll adjourn the resolution. Motion on the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Mr. Nun, second?
A second.
Ms. Wilson, on the roll call?
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Dorothy?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Go move.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a continuation for Anna Management. Sonya, do you want to read this one?
Mr. Chairman, this is the PB 0721, Anna Management LLC for Site Man, Block 8602, Lot 4, 5, and 6, 222 Madison Avenue in the B11 zone. This is a continuation from the March 21st and April 18th, 2020, public hearings. Applicant proposes to convert the Assistant Bank into a Dunkin' Donuts with curbside service in a market where customers can purchase prepackaged items.
Just a correction, there is 2022 public hearings. Okay.
Yes, that's what I said, 2022.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm recused from this application, so I'm going to sign off.
Yes, all right, thank you. Ms. Wolf, do you want to?
Sure, I believe at the last hearing, we left off with the public questioning of Mr. Chase, and we concluded that, so at this point, we would be up to public comment, I believe, unless Mr. Brady has anything new to add.
No, I don't. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, David Brady of the Thorough Brady and Cori Allen, I agree with Ms. Wolf that we're up to the public testimony and comment portion of the application.
Okay. And... So at this point in time, we'll open up the floor to members of the public who would like to make comments on this application. I see a hand raised. Someone named Sue, would you please identify your first, last, first and last name and address?
And then also.
Hi there, yes. My name is Susan Sorchelli, S-A-U-C-H-E-L-L-I, and I'm representing 9 Green Knolls Road, which is off of Normity Parkway. So I have lived in the area for.
Hang on one second. If I can just swear you one, can you raise your right hand?
Oh, my goodness. All right.
You swear the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Uh, yes. This is the first time I've had to do that, but yes, okay.
Is there any way you can turn your camera on or no?
Oh, wait a minute, hold on.
Am I on now? Hold on, I thought I was on. No, that's okay. We otherwise had to promote you, so that's fine.
Okay. So I've lived in the area all my life, 60 years.
Before, Ms. Wolf, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Brady?
If I may, when Mrs. Chilly was introducing herself, she said she represents 9 Green Hills Road, and the use of the word "represents" makes me wonder if she's a lawyer or if she's speaking on behalf of a group, or what does that mean exactly?
I'm speaking on behalf of my father, who's 95 years old and has lived at the same address since 1955. But you don't want my 95-year-old father speaking his mind. I'll do it very much more politically correct.
Okay.
Okay? So.
I have no objection.
Thank you. I live two minutes away. I live in Whippening, and I'm at his house every day. I frequent this corridor all, all the time. So I feel I still have the ability to be able to speak about this road and, and this establishment. So I'm speaking about the area that we're now calling the, apparently, the Madison Avenue Corridor. And if you go to the EDAC Committee meeting last week, it required feedback that we got from the residents about the vision plan for this corridor. And if you review those minutes, you will notice that the proposed Dunkin' Donuts was brought up several times and always as a negative example. Here are my following concerns, and I will keep it to five minutes because I've already timed myself. Number one, the most obvious is an increase in the traffic congestion. Now, I know a traffic report was performed, but it must have been done between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. because the a.m., p.m. rush is horrendous. And although Duncan estimates a total of 400 to 500 patrons a day, I bet you that the majority will be, will frequent the establishment during rush hour times. Traffic, especially during those times, is fairly constant. Yes, there are gaps in the stream, but getting them to align to be able to make a left-hand turn sometimes requires divine intervention. This holds true not only for coming out of Dunkin' Donuts, but it would also be trying to get in. Consider the following scenario. A truck driver coming out of Marstown wants to stop and get coffee before his morning run. Now, depending on the size of the vehicle, people may be able to utilize the shoulder to go around the waiting driver. But if this is not possible, then traffic can easily become backed up to Friendly's. Number two, many drivers look for the most convenient route so they don't have to wait, even if it means disregarding signage. There are two driveways to this property, one fronting on 124 and the other, which is on a side street. You probably know where I'm going with this, and I'm going to say it for the record anyway. The side entrance only allows a left-hand turn due to a one-way street for those few poor residents located there and those on Old Turnpike Road. I do not see everyone being a good doobie and following those signs. Some are going to make that right hand anyway and either come out at the traffic light at the bank or continue down Old Turnpike Road. Number three, the surrounding roads that will be quiet no more as shortcuts are found to circumvent the congestion. For example, people accessing Woodland Road as a parallel alternate. Also, in the morning rush hour, accessing Old Turnpike Road, you go over the tracks, you take Prescott, which is a wide, unmarked road with no possibly, you know, with no speed limits posted. You can get to Park Avenue real easy. From there, you can go to your office that's on Park Ave or access Highway 24 once the construction is done. On the flip side, the p.m. rush scenario, have you ever traveled that corridor westbound going to Marstown at 5:00 in the afternoon? It's a disaster of stop-and-go traffic, which could back up as far as JCP and L. Here are some ways around that. You could take Woodland Road, cut up Old Glen, go across, and then the tracks, again, go to Prescott, cut down Stockton, you get to Columbia Road. You got great access to 287 and 124 without having to wait in traffic. Number four, almost every breakout group during the EDAC Vision Planning Meeting also mentioned the residential atmosphere and how box stores will make it begin to look like Marstown, Madison, or Route 10. I do not want this area to become known as downtown Marstownship. If one large chain store is allowed to build, it opens the door for many others to come in. And lastly, let's not forget the homes that back up to this establishment. An increase in wrong-way traffic, the lights that are beyond for the parking lot, and litter that will blossom as spent disposable items like cups, wooden stirrers, sugar packets, and napkins that don't quite make it into the garbage can start to blow around. I have nothing against Dunkin' Donuts personally, but I view its success, its acceptance as taxing an already overburdened stretch of road and area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions from what I said? Did I make everything clear?
Seemed clear to me. Any board members have questions? Okay, thanks again. So our next member of the public, Ms. Collins?
Good evening.
We can hear you.
I'm raising my right hand.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And if you just give us your full name and address.
Patricia Collins, 4 Green Knolls Road, Marstown. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board, and thank you for hearing us. I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on what the previous person said. I was very gratified to see that in that vision plan that 60 people had signed up, 60 great residents, and over 40 were on the call and broken into groups. So I am respectfully requesting that the board postpone the vote until tomorrow night, when, or I should say, the next meeting, and so they can hear all of the reports, which will be issued tomorrow night at the EDAC meeting. And they'll go over what everyone thinks about what the previous caller just said. And again, I got from the calls, they wanted requirements for setbacks, no fast food, and the traffic is horrendous. And by the way, for the record, I've lived here 40-plus years, and I consider myself a traffic expert because I've had too many problems over the years with traffic around here. My next, all right, my comment then regarding Langdon Lane to Madison. The traffic engineer hours, Brightview, it responded, it was on page two of two, the number 10. The intersection, and it said, the intersection is responding, by the way, to Mr. Chase's initial report. And it said, the Langdon Lane is projected to operate as an LOS, which means Level of Service F. F is in failure. The one of the reasons it's a failure is because it's an increased accident exposure. And anyone who lives around here could tell you that right off the bat. So, and one major problem, because a lot of my neighbors wanted to get on the call to comment, but there's no meeting minutes. So we can't see what Mr. Chase verbally said about mitigating the circumstances of getting off Langdon Lane. So that's a major problem, by the way. Everything we went to look at, there's no meeting minutes for any of these. So, and just to mention too, when I come from Madison, from visiting my grandchildren, I goes up Woodland, and then I go up to Old Glen, because then I know I just have one torturous long block to get to before I turn at Friendly's, because I live down the street from Friendly's. Okay, and one other thing, I remember the owner of, a few more things, please. I remember the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts stated that, when he was asked, that the Madison Dunkin' Donuts had approximately 600 customers a day. So we were assuming that TV Bank, which is twice the size as the Madison one, and plus it has expanded product line, would only, would have about 1,200 customers a day, but the owner corrected me and said, there's only going to be 400 customers a day. So that kind of doesn't add up to me, but again, my problem is, and my neighbors' problems, like, where is the documentation? Where is the documentation where they have projected visits from the owners? And there's nothing out there on this. And it happened again when my, another neighbor went to look for something. The report said, this is the traffic report, by the way, by Mr. Chase, that the proposed use would generate 234 more total vehicular trips and 87 more new vehi, new vehicular trips. And he tried to explain it by saying, you have to go out when there's a gap in the road to make, in the, when it's going to right, and then go on the painted lines before you can make a left. But my neighbors wanted to know what the response was, and there's no meeting minutes. So I need to ask a question of the township lawyer and within that regard. Does the township have a legal requirement to provide meeting minutes and transcripts to the public? Could someone answer that question? Is there the lawyer for the township there?
Yes, I'm here. And typically, yes, this would be posted on the website.
But it's not. So do, it's not. So nothing's on the website. So don't you have a legal obligation to put everything on the website?
The recordings are posted, is that, you know, I don't know that.
That would be sufficient if there's digital recordings, but I'm just not sure.
Have you contacted the secretary for a copy of the recording? But that should be on the website, so all my neighbors could see it. And there's absolutely nothing there. So my neighbors were not able to even ask questions tonight because there's nothing there for any of the meetings, as far as verbal responses. So and if, I have to ask the lawyer then, if the township's not meeting the requirements, then how does this impact the legality of this particular meeting?
Hold the secretary. Um, I guess if you had wanted to get a copy or if you had questions about the hearing, you could have just reached out to Sonia, but I understand that you believe that they should be on the website, and typically they would be. I do not believe that would affect the legality of this proceeding. It just might be something that the township wants to consider in the future.
Um, I'm sorry, am I, I'm sorry if I'm not following you. So in other words, the fact that my neighbors couldn't find out what was said, that doesn't matter?
Well, typically, the minutes wouldn't have been available for the prior meeting until this meeting anyway, because they would have had to have been adopted at this meeting, so they wouldn't have been posted on the website in advance of this hearing. But regardless, I believe you noted that all of the documents were available online, and that board is only obligated to provide those documents for this hearing.
Is that all you're obligated to do? Okay, well, then I would appeal to the board to, could you postpone the, the meeting for two reasons? Number one, to see what the other people had to say with the vision meeting, but also, my neighbors, they don't even know what everybody said on this meeting, so would somebody put it up there? Put up the, even the, the videos, whatever you have. So I respectfully request that, okay? And am I allowed to end, make another comment in a few minutes, if I may? I'm probably out of time.
You can make another comment.
Oh, okay. Another one was, I asked it last time, if the daycare center primrose was taken into account, and Mr. Chase said it, it was. But then I noticed on the response from our traffic engineer, and that would be the April 12th copy, would page 2 of 4, number 3. It says, the applicant's traffic engineer is encouraged to reach out to the office to obtain copies of appropriate reports. So what I think we should be looking for is how many babies are going into that daycare center, which is right next to Dunkin' Donuts? And this baby's going in there in the morning, by the way, that's when daycare centers start, and that's when people go for their morning coffee. And I think we should have some more information about that. How many children will be in there? How, the timeframe, and I don't see any of that out there. I mean, I see a lot of reports out there, but there's nothing about that. And so I'm respectfully requesting that this be postponed for a vote until we can get those videos up there, so my neighbors can see it. And I thank you for that. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
I would invite Mr. Brady just to weigh in on that fact or request.
Which fact is that? The request for the postponement while additional information is posted on the website?
Correct, both.
Well, I think two, two requests for postponements, I think, were made by, by Ms. Collins. One was to wait until the, I'm not sure if I got the name of the group, but we'll call it the Madison Avenue Corridor Study Group, until it comes out with its findings. Of course, the time of application rule requires that the zoning ordinance in effect at the time that the application was submitted is the zoning ordinance that governs this application. So there may be some desire to change the rules with regard to this zone. There may not be, we don't know, because that's ultimately up to the governing body based upon a recommendation by this board. But we do know that those changes would have no effect on this application because the application is made and governed by the ordinance that is in effect at the time the application was made. So that, I think that, that is not a basis upon which to ask that the board postpone any decision on this. I think the second basis for the request for a postponement was that minutes and/or audio/video recordings of the prior meetings were not available on the website. I think the board is required by law to adopt minutes. I'm not sure that there is a specific requirement as to the timeframe, but as Ms. Wolf pointed out, it is typical that minutes are not adopted for at least a month after the meeting while they're prepared, reviewed by the board, and officially adopted, and sometimes that frankly goes beyond a month. I don't think that anything that's going on here with regard to this application is unusual. There, I don't know that there's any requirement that those minutes be posted on a town website. They are available through an Oprah request or things of that nature. Same thing applies to the audio/video recording. I don't know of anything that requires an audio/video recording of every public hearing be posted on, on the municipality's website. And most importantly with regard to that request is, these meetings have been public, they have been advertised, they have been continued. If someone wanted to hear about this application and hear all the testimony, and I think actually Ms. Collins was involved in the last one, but maybe not her neighbors that she's spoken about. They were public meetings. They could have been attended. Testimony could have been heard, questions could have been asked. So I don't think either of the requests for the postponement are well-founded, nor should they be granted.
What about our lawyer? What about the lawyer for the township? Do you have anything to say about that?
I would, I would concur with Mr. Brady as to the time of application rule, he is complete, or I'm sorry, he is correct, that it was, whenever the application was submitted, the laws or ordinances in effect at that time would govern the application, so even if there were a future change down the line, that probably wouldn't affect this matter. And as far as the minutes and audio recordings, as he said, you could have requested them from the board secretary, and all of the meetings were publicly advertised in accordance with the law.
I would also note that the questioning period ended at the last meeting, so the, that portion of the public hearing was closed.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate that, that it was closed, but I, as a, as a resident and, and a, I've been living here for so many years, sometimes you think of a question afterwards, like, I don't have the mind of Ethely Bailey or Alan Dershowitz, so when someone's talking, I can immediately say, oh gee, I have, I can question that particular point that was made. However, when you see things that kind of don't add up, I mean, I'd like, just like someone to address it, like, if this, how can it be twice the size and have about two-thirds of the customers going in and out? And I'm, and it's a public safety thing too, so that's why I'm bringing that up. I mean, I love Dunkin' Donuts myself. I, I frequent other ones, but to, it's, to me, it has, does, does not have a good place here. So asking these questions about, I think, is very legitimate, and it's legitimate. So, you know, if the law is the law, I have to go along with it, but it doesn't, it, something's, it does, something's not right either if other people can't, when, what if people missed the meetings? I realize that they're advertised publicly, but people work late, they have children. So many of these people have children, and they have to take care of their children. I mean, my children are raised, so I'm, I'm available to, to sit at meetings. And if they want to ask something, it's almost like we're stymied by this, and these big companies come in with lawyers and engineers, blah, 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 and we're getting the feeling that we're just like chopped liver, to be quite honest with you. So I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed.
Understood. And maybe Mr. Brady can do us a favor, if the board chair is so willing, to let Ms. Collins ask her question, and we can have either Mr. Fischinger or Mr. Chase or both address it. But that would be up to Mr. Brady and Mr. Benoit.
But think, well, from my point of view, once we get through all the public comments, perhaps we can address, you know, if there's one or two that are hanging out there, we can address in short order, yes, but I don't want to reopen the entire testimony. As Mr. Slate indicated, we've had the, the direct, we've had the cross, and this is not really an opportunity to go back and, and re-cross again. But if there's some point of clarification, or two points of clarification, I, I don't have a particular objection to that.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, because board members may have a few questions as well, but I believe that Ms. Collins did ask about whether there was going to be additional review done for the school, the safety of the, I don't remember what it was exactly.
Yes, the, the Primrose School, Mr. Chairman, that, it's like, how? Yes, with the, the Primrose School, um, Mr. Chairman, that it's like, how many babies are going to be in there every day? And they go in, they go in eight to nine or seven earlier when the parents drop them off. That's the whole function.
Our traffic expert, Mr. Fisher can answer that question. I do believe that the, uh, traffic for this daycare was taken into consideration in the updated report. Joe, can you confirm that?
Sure. Excuse me. Yes, the, the comment Ms. Collins was citing in my review memo, memo was exactly that, requesting that they add, the applicant add the traffic from the daycare center into their study along with the residential hardware site further down Madison Avenue. And that was done and the traffic study was updated to account for it. Um, I don't know the exact number of trips off the top of my head from the daycare center. Um, I can look that up if need be, although their first round of the traffic study did not include it. And that was one of the things I had them do um, upon the revisions was I provided them a copy of the traffic study for that site and had them add it to their, their numbers in their analysis.
My, my notes could, could, uh, are the same as Mr. Fisher's indications, which that, uh, though traffic studies, I think it's, if I can read my handwriting, 200 Madison Avenue and 355 Madison Avenue were provided, were considered and were, um, addressed in the final version.
Could someone please, when you have an opportunity, I would appreciate it, but in the final version, um, and I thought I looked at all of them. What is the number of children going in there? The number of participants? I mean, that's what I think I would be looking for.
Ms. Collins, it's the number of traffic, number of vehicles exiting, incoming. And I, I recall as well, that was all placed into the traffic study. So I believe that, um, those numbers are already accounted for in the revised traffic study.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? Do I see? Hand raised?
I see a hand going back and forth. G Y M I C at yahoo dot com.
Jim, I believe that's Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you give us your full name, address, and I'll swear you in?
Yes, James Kavanaugh, 11 Featherly Road, resident 53 years.
Thank you. Would you raise your hand? Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do indeed. I do indeed.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
What was your address again? I'm sorry.
11 Featherly Road.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for here, for having this, uh, meeting and public meeting. And I was impressed by the EDAC meeting the other, uh, day. And I made comments and I was very impressed that we're moving in the direction of trying to get more information out. Because I feel that there, residents, uh, who basically pay for all this ultimately, uh, learn of these things, uh, very often too late. And I know you have, you try to speed things along. But the developers, I think, generally are in a, uh, better position because, uh, uh, they, they do a lot of the information beforehand. But anyway, by that way of background, we also have the disadvantage from the public with the Zoom. And so I would ask for a little more tolerance when different points are made, uh, by people like Mrs. Lochelli and Mrs. Collins. I think it's important to basically pass on the comment that at the EDAC meetings where there were around 40 who were in the breakout sessions in the seven groups, they reported all back and I stayed for the whole thing. And if you had the advantage of hearing all that, and I think they issue their consolidated report tomorrow, uh, I'd almost, uh, encourage if it didn't screw you up in terms of your planning purposes, uh, to hold off this for another day or two, because what you're going to hear, and I respectfully give you my opinion, but this is what I think you'll hear, is the three main issues from EDAC, which is planning going out for five years. Traffic, 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 safety. And in particular, the Primrose was mentioned there. So I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Fisher updated that traffic type information. But I think given the, uh, review of the seven, uh, breakout committee, uh, you know, you might weigh that again. And then the other comment was that generally across the 40 people that were in there, they were against fast foods, period. And, uh, I'm giving you my representation, but you could talk to the chairman and the seven leaders. They were all very, very professional, very, very open. So I'm trying to give you the benefit of what you would see tomorrow. And if you go ahead and approve something tonight, it's kind of, you may, you may be kind of regretting it and, uh, only for a couple of days. I don't know how that might screw you up. And I'm just passing that information along. And, uh, so that's pretty much it. I thank you for all your time and your dedication and trying to get this information out. And I know it's not nice sitting there and getting, uh, some of these questions, but that's what we're all here for. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Any other members of the public wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, the public portion. So at this point, do we do closing?
Yes. Well, Mr. Brady, I'm not sure if Mr. Benoit is intending to permit questioning, but then would you like to reserve your right to provide a summation until after the questions?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to do, uh, a summary right now, uh, if during the, if when the board starts to consider the application, there's some point they'd like qualified. Uh, you know, I, I would like to reserve the right to have the applicant respond to that. But I think at this point I could sum up where we are and what we're looking for and, and then, uh, we could proceed from there.
That's fine, because I think that we have questions. We would want you to be able to address them anyway.
Okay. Um, well, well, thank everybody for, for attending to this. I think we're in the third meeting tonight. As you know, we've applied to repurpose that 4D bank building, which is now sat empty for about five years. It's not likely to become a bank building again. Uh, they're not putting up more bank buildings. They're, they're closing bank buildings. We're looking to repurpose this site, which is already existing, and we have only minor changes, uh, to the site. We have a use that is permitted in the zone. Specifically, it's a Dunkin' Donuts with the typical Dunkin' Donuts counter and seating area, and it has an expanded, uh, range of prepackaged offerings that are going to go on one side of the store. As Mr. Patel said, the store, the building is unusually large for Dunkin' Donuts. But to make it make sense for him, uh, to expand the, the, the small amount of packaged good, prepackaged goods that might be available on your typical Dunkin' Donuts, we're going to use that extra space to offer a little more in terms of prepackaged goods. Uh, but it's going to all be operated by Anna management. It's not going to be two separate uses. It, it's not a, um, it's not a Dunkin' Donuts on one side and a Subway sandwich shop on the other. It's all a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, operation. Uh, we're not proposing any drive-through. Drive-throughs are not permitted here. We're not proposing any outside dining. That is not permitted here. We do have curbside pickup. That's a common use at all restaurants that has become ubiquitous, particularly over the last couple of years with the COVID-19 pandemic. Here we have a canopy that used to cover the, uh, drive-through lanes for TD Bank, uh, available. So we're planning on making use of that canopy so that when people drive up and are waiting for the curbside pickup, uh, that they can be, uh, out of the elements. We're not seeking any variances except for we have three parking spaces that are, I think, nine foot wide where 10 is required, but we are overparked. We have 23 spaces where only nine spaces are required. So if anybody feels a space is a little tight, they can park somewhere else in the lot. Uh, we've been responsive to the township professionals and to the board from the beginning. We started off with, uh, TCC meetings as always and kind of a concept application, uh, to the professionals. We, we changed our plans as suggested. We've changed our plan since. We've added electronic or electric vehicle chargers. Uh, we've added some additional curbside pickup spots in case someone does not want to go around the back and, uh, sit in under the canopy. Uh, we've added light shields in the back of the property. We've agreed to, uh, reduce the functional drive-through lanes under the canopy to one for the curbside pickup and to put a sidewalk that comes out there. Uh, we've added a refuse container and a surround. Uh, we're going to remove the vacuum tubes. There was a request. We add a bike rack and we've agreed to do that. Um, so we've been responsive throughout. Uh, I know there's a lot of, there've been a lot of questions about traffic, but we've had our traffic engineer testify, your traffic engineer look over the report. The site works. Uh, as Ms. Collins pointed out, there is one level of service that goes to F, but the testimony was clear that because of the gaps that are, um, created by the nearby light, it is not going to be as, as, uh, bad, so to speak, of a level of service as the normal, um, computer analysis would predict. Uh, we've heard now about this corridor group that has been looking at the corridor, as I've indicated. That's, that's interesting and perhaps it'll be a change in the future. It's not a change now. And it's not a change to the ordinance that affects us because the ordinance that counts here is the ordinance that was in effect at the time that we filed. And as I said, under that ordinance, we are fully complying with the exception of the width of three parking spaces. Uh, I understand there's some concerns perhaps by this group about congestion, but we are permitted use. Uh, case law indicates that when you are permitted use congestion that may happen on, uh, accompanying streets is not a legitimate function of the board. That is something that if a use, uh, that's permitted generates more and more traffic as it sounds like, uh, this, this group is concerned about, that's up then to the township to change the zoning. And as I said, that may happen in the future. It's not the case here. Um, for all those reasons, we would request that the board approve us. I understand I've made notes, extensive notes, Mr. Chairman, of probably about two dozen, uh, conditions. And if the board is so inclined to approve, I would be more than happy to go through with the board to make sure that we capture them in any resolution that may be prepared.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do have one request and maybe I don't remember correctly. Um, on the sign in front above the door, was that an illuminated light? I noticed the one in Chatham is not illuminated. And if we can get one that's not illuminated, like Chatham, so we don't see the Dunkin' Colors from down the street.
You mean the, the sign that's right above the entryway, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Is that illuminated?
That is illuminated, yes.
Yeah. Could you make that flat like the one in Chatham?
I would have to talk to Mr. Patel. Um, I, I could give him a call and go on mute perhaps because I have not.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I have not thought about that possibility frankly, but you know, it's open in the evening. There's going to have to be some lighting to identify the, the sign we have, I mean, the site. We have the sign out near Madison Avenue, but typically you would have a sign over the door somehow.
The one in Chatham does not have lights, so that's why I was asking. That way we don't see the lights from the distance.
Well, maybe if we go through, if other board members have questions, maybe at some point before, uh, a motion and a vote, we could take a quick break. I could contact Mr. Patel either by, uh, phone or text and, and get an answer for you.
We can do that. Um, board members, any questions, comments? This is not exactly deliberations yet. Um, Mayor Joffrey?
I'll save it to deliberation. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. Um, any other board members with questions?
I'd like to hear, um, Amanda go through the conditions that she has.
Okay, that's the next item. Let's do that.
Okay. So the applicant is, I actually sent this list to Mr. Brady as well as our board professionals, and most of them had a chance to respond and get back to me to either add more or delete some. So I think we should all be on the same page as far as these go, but here's the list I have. The applicant will comply with all comments set forth in the review memorandum by the board professionals. No drive-throughs permitted, i.e. no speakers, no menu boards outside, no outdoor dining areas. The market area shall be operated by Anna management. The applicant shall comply with the EV charging space requirement. I believe they're proposing one dual port charger. The applicant shall consolidate slash merge the lots and the deeds and descriptions shall be subject to review and approval of the township engineer as well as the board attorney. Uh, refuse and recycling pickup is to occur after 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so it's not during the rush hour.
Amanda, if, if I can, there, um, just because we don't want to run afoul of anything, instead of seven to five, can we do six to six? But that's the, otherwise I agree with, with limiting the idea of when we take it out, we don't want to pick it up in the middle of night. There are some residences nearby. Uh, but we're just concerned, we don't want pick hours that are a little too confined for the garbage men perhaps.
Okay, I've noted that. And then I had a note about no new man door. I'm not sure if that's still a condition.
Uh, that's still a condition.
Okay. All signage shall comply with the ordinance requirements. The plan shall be revised to include all of the proposed signage, including any NJ DOT signage or directional signage that may have been removed, i.e. the no left turn sign. Um, all landscaping shall be subject to the review and approval of the Township Engineering Department. The applicant shall.
I have, I have a note also on my notes with regard to the installation of that sign in the island that, that you're just discussing, that we would repair the island if required.
Thank you. Okay. Um, the applicant shall replace dead or dying landscaping and ensure that the buffer to the residential properties is adequate. Revised plans to include landscaping on the three sides of the dumpster enclosure. Such landscaping shall be deer resistant. I believe Mr. Slate and one of your applicant professionals had a discussion about the type of trees. Um, only curbside pickup under the canopy, i.e. no drive-through, comply with all architectural standards in the ordinance. The applicant shall remove the first two islands in between the former drive-through lanes, modify the striping and or parking areas under the canopy. Specifically, the applicant stipulated they will only use the lane closest to the building or the middle lane, but in no case will there be more than one lane. The applicant shall install sidewalk along the frontage of the building leading to curbside delivery area. The applicant shall remove the old vacuum tube system from the bank. Delivery shall be made only by box trucks. The applicant shall revise note 24 on sheet one regarding the striping. It currently says that the existing striping will remain. That is not the case. The lighting plan shall be subject to the review and approval of the Township Engineering Department. All lighting shall be downward directed or house side, house side shields installed. The applicant shall install refuse containers as in smaller garbage cans if determined to be necessary to reduce litter. The applicant shall install bike racks if there's an appropriate location for saying. The applicant shall also obtain NJ DOT approval. Oh, uh, the hours of operation will be from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. And that was all I had, but anyone has anything?
I have one clarification on the lighting, uh, because the existing lights are not down facing the new lights or will be down facing. So just clarification that new lights will be down, uh, type lighting. And I have a problem with the 6:00 AM garbage pickup and we typically get complaints on that stuff. Uh, my, my preference is to stick to the 7:00 AM.
Okay. Well, if you have to live with seven to five, we'll live with that.
I'm right, seven to six.
Seven to six, yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to, I was looking at Google Street View of the Chatham Dunkin' Donuts. And you're correct, it's not an internally illuminated sign, but it does have gooseneck lighting, which is on at night. Uh, so the sign is visible at night. Uh, so that is a potential alternative that perhaps the applicant could consider.
And Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, communicated by text with my client, that the illuminated sign is a permitted sign in that area, in that zone. Uh, they're willing to turn it off overnight, you know, once they close, so it's not on all night long, uh, but they do want to have it illuminated.
So you'll turn it off at 10:00 PM?
Right. Well, I assume 10, I'm going to say 10:30 is their turning off thing. So there's not a moment someone walks out the door, it's turned off. I would think if within a half hour of closing, something of that nature, as they turn on, you know, as they shut down. The moment someone walks out the door, it's turned off. I would think if, within a half hour of closing, something of that nature, as they turn on, you know, as they shut down the operation.
Okay, I don't know how bright it's going to be. Um. So this, does, does the ordinance talk about the brightness of the sign? Will we be sure that it's not too bright? Jim, you know?
I, I'm not aware of any language in the ordinance that talks about the brightness of signage.
Me neither.
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that I heard Mr. Slate right, and I think he's a hundred percent correct. The light, the, the new lighting is downward facing and there'll be house side shields in the rear. Um, but the, the site lighting otherwise, it's not indicated on the plan to be changed, remains the globe fixtures that they are.
And I'm referring to the brightness of the Duncan sign over the door. Do you know? You know, will it be just bright enough to see or is it going to be overly bright? I just can see driving down the street and seeing that Duncan sign illuminating out and it'll be the only thing we see like that going down the street.
Would the applicant be amenable to gooseneck lighting?
Excuse me, I couldn't understand you.
Would the applicant be amenable to gooseneck lighting?
Uh, I will see.
Do other board members have a preference? Maybe I'm just being crazy here.
I, this is Linda Murphy. I don't have any problem with a lighted sign over the door.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just to, I would be, if we're going to be concerned about light, I'd be more concerned about the freestanding sign because that's going to be in the direction of the neighbors. As opposed to the Duncan sign that would be directly across the street. Um, so if we were going to pick a sign to be concerned about the lighting, I would be concerned about the lighting from the actual main sign.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, both, both signs are permitted. Um. Illuminated signage is permitted. We, we can turn off the sign over the door overnight. Um, but, but not interested in changing uh, to a gooseneck sort of application here. It's kind of a standard Duncan sign. And as I say, most importantly, we've tried to make sure our application fits within permitted parameters and it does.
Okay, so we'll stipulate the sign go off by ten thirty?
Correct. Thirty minutes after closing.
Right, right.
Mr. Brady, is the applicant willing to stipulate to the uh, main sign along the roadway going off at ten thirty as well?
I will let you know as soon as I receive a response to my text. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm thinking is, Mr. Chairman, thirty minutes, because again, you've got to get things kind of going thirty minutes before they open, thirty minutes after they open, are the, are the. Two outside parameters on turning those signs on.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with additional stipulations? We're okay with those? Do I see a hand up?
Mr. Quinlan has the same raise.
Mr. Quinlan?
A question about the uh, lane closures, the four, the three lanes that are covered and the fourth lane that's um, outside of that uh, covered, covered um, area. Um, the applicant is stipulating that only one of those four lanes would be usable. Is that correct? I think I missed that from the prior meeting.
Yeah, we, what we've indicated is that we will pick one of the two lanes closest to the building. To be used as the curbside pickup, most likely the middle lane, because that will allow uh, an area for uh. Uh, for the attendants to walk out around this new sidewalk we're going to put around the edge of the building and get in there and come out. Um, I'm a little reluctant to say that I think there's a fourth lane, which is like a pass-by lane that we would um. Get rid of that just in case someone does come around the back of the building and decides they want to go back out front, whether they could go. Go back out to the front and I'm looking at the site plan right now. Is that something that we can uh, we'll work with Mr. Slate and our engineer to figure out what, what makes the most sense for traffic circulation on that?
I guess I would, I think there is a way to get around, uh, going around the outer island there, that um, teardrop shaped island. So I don't think it's necessary.
There might be, I'm just reluctant as the, I like to play engineer, but I'm not one. So I'm reluctant to stipulate to that.
So is that uh, stipulation or is it just something you're going to work out with Jim? Jim, do you know what I'm looking for?
I'm okay with uh, you know, working that out. I, I don't know the benefit or, or how we would, you know, close that lane off if that area would be curbed off. I, I don't see that being a problem as a bypass lane.
Thanks. George, is that okay? You're, you're on me.
I have further comments about that, but I don't have uh, any questions uh, related to that, so um, I'll, I'll wait until it's comment time.
Until deliberations. Any other questions right now of the applicant? So why don't we move into deliberations? Um. Board members, any, Mayor Joffrey?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, and I just want to thank the applicant. Uh, and the applicant's professionals for keeping everything straightforward and professional throughout this process. It's been. A few hearings and I appreciate the respect and the thoughtful answers being provided from the questions from the board. Um, I do have concerns uh, with the plan that I did wish to bring up with the board. Um, and I think Mr. Quinlan was kind of getting to the uh, focus of that. I do feel that um, the onsite traffic flow. Uh, by keeping the current design is flawed. I do have concerns um, for the safety of pedestrians, vehicle traffic and customers alike. Um, I think the retention of the canopy while I, I applaud the idea of saving things and not. Um, having things go to waste and trying to save money and keeping the canopy as is. I do think it creates an awkward situation for future customers and clients coming in there. I think there'll be confusion for people driving in and driving out. Um, additionally, I quite honestly question whether or not this follows suit with the intent of our um, drive-through. Um, ordinance preventing it. While we may not have signs, you may not be ordering through a window. There will be a line of customers waiting in line at a former drive-through area that will still, I believe, have concrete medians in between where the old lanes were. Um, I think that is, that's a concern to me. Um, aesthetically, it's not very nice. Um, but ultimately for us at the board. Um, and under the parameters of what we can and cannot allow, I do have a, an issue with the traffic flow um, on the site. Um, and I would wish to just bring that up to the rest of the board. Um, because I think there are similar concerns amongst other board members.
Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Quinlan?
Uh, yeah, I'll elaborate a bit on um, on my um, the thoughts that I was hinting at before. I, I have similar to concern, concerns to Mayor Joffrey. I feel that the circulation on the site is far from ideal. And I've been troubled by exactly what it is that bothers me about this application. I've visited the site um, several times. Uh, I've driven the site several times. I've walked the site several times. I've walked. Uh, all the way around the block, um, a block that I was familiar, familiar with before, but I had not really concentrated on this particular parcel of land. So much before. And I realized that there are things about the, the way that the bank designed its traffic flow. That I don't think I would have approved of if the application for the site pla, if I'd been on the planning board when that site plan application had come. Before the planning board. I'm not certain about that, but I think I would have been troubled by some of the same things then that I am now. Um, having to do with how cars flow around the site. Um, I think it is confusing and particularly now that the bank. Uh, at the bank um, structure is unchanged or proposed to be unchanged. Uh, and the um, purpose of the uh, the, the Dunkin' Donuts. Um. Functioning is proposed to be somewhat different, substantially different under the canopy. Uh, I think that will be confusing to people. I think some, people are going to get a little stuck at times. Uh, and uncertain which way to turn. So I think there is some safety issue and uh, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Thank you, Mr. Quinlan. Any other board members want to weigh in? Mr. Bai?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of comments. Um. Okay, I am uh. I don't share the concerns, at least to the extent that uh, Mayor Joffrey or Mr. Quinlan have over the onsite traffic flow. From the beginning, I think my biggest concern over this was traffic in general. But um. Um, and I, you know, putting whatever faith is due in the traffic studies, I'm somewhat encouraged by the comparison. And I want to thank Mr. Fissinger for asking that they compare it to what it was when it was a bank. Because it's difficult to uh, um. It, it, it's always going to come out bad compared to what it's been recently because there's nothing there, so. And if you assume something will be built, something will be there. Um, this actually seems to be almost an improvement over the, over what it would be with the bank. There's uh, it shows eighty-seven potential new trips in the morning peak hour compared to a bank. And, but fifteen fewer in the afternoon rush hour. And the traffic counts showed that it was the, the afternoon is the, the peak traffic is, peak traffic hours more volume than in the morning. So in terms of balancing traffic out, that's actually not, it's not as, anywhere near as bad as I thought, and I guess most, most of that is because. Not unexpectedly, the Dunkin' Donuts, much of the traffic is, is pass-by traffic and not generating new trips. So I don't think the traffic concern, I mean, it's, traffic is always a concern. But I'm not sure that there's anything that would go in there that could be an operating business under the zoning and would, you know, be much better. Um, or, or much different. So I'm somewhat, the, the traffic concerns have been somewhat alleviated in general. Uh, I am very sensitive to the public comments on the uh, the, the, the vision study. Um, I'm glad that that's going on and glad there are people taking, because I think that's, I have long thought that. Um, that, you know, if you want to affect the way that the, the township looks and will look in the future, it's the master plan and the ordinances that have to be dealt with. Um, there's, there's, under the existing laws and rules, there's very little the planning board can do. We make recommendations and ask for concessions and, and get some improvements and that's. And very much, you know, work with people trying to get them better. But the developers and the people owning the property can only, only live with the existing ordinances and zoning laws. Which they have. I mean, this, this completely fits the, the zone. It's allowed. Uh, they originally wanted the drive-through. Um, which was, I know specifically, you know, that went into the, that ordinance was passed in about two years ago. They disallow that, so they've modified their plan to do that, um, to take that away and it is now just a, um, um, pickup, curbside pickup. Um, so. It's not, I would say it's not, wouldn't necessarily be my choice of what I would want to go in there, but it certainly seems to fit. Uh, I can, actually kind of like the fact that they're not changing the building. I mean, the building has been there and it's not exactly a historic building. But it has a certain presence and it uh, looks, um, it, you know, it, it looks, to my, to my, to my eye, it's better than any newly built. Than many newly built Dunkin' Donuts um, buildings that I've seen. So I think leaving it as is is an improvement. So uh, uh, in general, I think they have been, they have worked with the professionals to do everything they can. They fit other than the few. Other than the, the, the variance for the three parking spaces that are under, that are undersized. Which is a perfectly reasonable in this situation to me. Um, they have decided to re-stripe the lot, which was not in their original plans to, so that the rest of them meet the current ordinance. Um, again, another example they've met with, so I'm, I'm inclined to be in favor of this now, which somewhat surprises me, um, having, um, something. You know, from my kind of initial impression when I first read the, first read the plan, so that, those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Murphy?
I just want to say Mr. Bai's comments were well said and I concur with them all.
Any other board members? I would like to say also that um, this would not have been my idea of, of project that goes in there and I have some concerns about traffic. Under advice of council and of traffic engineers, the, the traffic up and down the street. Um. Is not our concern. That annoys me. Um, I am concerned about that. Um, category F turn. I'm not too concerned about the traffic internally. Um. If the, if the requirement is nine spots and they have twenty-seven or so. Then it sounds to me like. There should be room for figuring things out once you're in the, in that spot, even though I agree with Mr. Quinlan, it's, it's just a weird way of moving things around. Um, moving, moving cars around. I'm not too concerned. Relying on the veracity of the applicant that they're going to be only having twelve or so. Um, curbside pickups a day, then I'm not as concerned about the safety as I would have been um, a while back. Um. The applicant has made a, a number of concessions. Um, I'm very concerned about the traffic, the, the garbage. Uh, the applicant says they have a system in place for making sure that the garbage is not um, leaving the property and, and. We, I'm, I'm hoping that we can hold them to that. Um. I'm a little concerned about the type of signage and the type of. Character that a project like this will have on the neighborhood. I am particularly sensitive to the, the, the people who came to the meeting Thursday night. I was there. I was, attended the EDEC um, breakout groups and. So the applicant is aware, this type of project was certainly something that. Few people wanted, so I think that if the board approves this application, you might have an uphill battle toward. Becoming a, a, a real welcome neighbor. I think you might have some work to do. But overall, I drive down the street and that building, I agree with Mr. Bai. Um, even though I'd rather not see a canopy, what could be there instead? Um, on, on three lots could be a lot worse. Uh, we're maintaining that sort of character of, of the streetscape. Um, while changing the use to something that I don't prefer, but you know, we can't have everything. Um. I think that was everything I wanted to say. Um, but I think it's important for the members of the public to understand that. It's, it's not an easy decision, but the, the ordinance does provide it and, and I'm not sure we have any um, alternative. But, but to approve this proposal. So um, any other board members want to weigh in on that? If not, um. Then I'll entertain a motion or a resolution.
This is Linda Murphy. I move for approval with the conditions as outlined by Amanda Wolf.
I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Chief Nunn, second. On the roll call?
Mr. Quinlan?
Uh, I reluctantly vote no.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Joffrey?
No.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Bai?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Five to two. So move.
Was that everybody?
In favor, yes.
Okay. All right, congratulations, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. We appreciate your time and attention. Good night.
We'll have a resolution for you at our next meeting.
Okay, that would be great. I'll be in touch with Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. I'll send you a copy before we adopt it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson, you need to answer from left.
She's back.
Coming back.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a legislative committee report.
So Mayor, do you want to say something about that? Or I, I can just say.
I'll, I have other items, but I was just going to hold them off to a future meeting.
Okay. All right.
You want to go on to Sustainable New Jersey then?
Sure. So I did ask for a couple of minutes to talk with the board about our involvement in. The Sustainable Jersey Certification Program. This is the first year we've ever participated for the purpose of getting certified. And there, there is some overlap with the board's work, so I just wanted to take a few minutes and share a few thoughts about that. So for anyone who may not know, what is Sustainable Jersey? It's a nonprofit organization that provides tools, training, and financial incentives. To support municipalities and school systems as they pursue sustainability initiatives. Sustainable Jersey is a widely respected organization across our state. The materials and the training they produce comprise what I would call best practice advice based on input. From a wide variety of, of sources, including the Sustainability Institute of the College of New Jersey. DEP, the Board of Public Utilities, the business community, and experienced local government officials. At present of the five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in our state. Four hundred and eighty-nine of them are registered with Sustainable Jersey. Two hundred and nineteen of them have completed the requirements to be certified as part of their, the Sustainable Jersey. Certification program. One hundred and fifty-five are certified at the bronze level, which is what we're going for this year. And sixty-four are certified at the silver level, which is the next level up. Why is certification important? This question has been debated in Morris Township now for several years. It is true that documentation, the, the requirements to, to get certified. Does add an extra layer of work to what we already do. And that's, that's been an objection in the past. So the question that repeatedly comes up is, what is the value of certification? Why bother? My, my answer is that, a few points. Certification is an important way of recognizing what we value as a community. And our commitment to taking actions that support sustainability. Beyond just recognizing what we already do. I'm finding that the work of obtaining certification is opening doors to improving and enhancing what we already do. Particularly when it comes to communication and collaboration. And I think tonight is a good example. The content of some of the actions we're pursuing crosses the interests and responsibilities of several of our advisory board. Which in turn is creating a need for our advisory boards to collaborate with each other. We, we, we kind of have a tradition of working separately, sort of in silos. And the, the certification is causing a need for us to collaborate with each other. And communicate in ways that we have not before and which I think is very beneficial. So to my view, certification not only provides us the status and the public recognition we deserve. For all that we're doing, it also provides us a roadmap and tools and an incentive. To, to improve and, and, and get even better at what we're doing. So I do not see this, I know Mr. Slate and I have had this conversation. I, I do not see certification just as a feel-good exercise. I see it as a really important step in enhancing what we already do. Especially because of the new forms of discussion, information sharing, and collaboration across individuals and groups. That's kind of baked in to meeting the certification requirements. So with that, I just wanted to give you a, a brief overview. So you can see, if you could screen share. The, the SJ Doc, actions to be documented, Jim. I'm not able to screen share for some reason. But I did want to give you an overview of the actions that we're pursuing as part of our document, as part of our certification process. And then I wanted to highlight too, that overlap, especially with, with the planning board. Did you have a question, Linda, or is your hand?
I do have a question. You mentioned something about documentation for certification. Who has responsibility for that?
I'm going to get into that, but.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'll, I'll hold the, I'll hold the question if you're already.
Yeah, if you could, yeah, this is the one I wanted to look at. This is an overview of all the actions that we're pursuing. And number one on the list is create a green team, which is the only mandatory action you have to do. We, we passed a resolution establishing a green team. And to answer Linda's question, it's our green team this year, our first time through. That is doing the documentation work. So we have four people on the green team. Three of us are doing. Pretty much all of the documentation that's required, which is collecting documents, writing little text passages. Uploading it, you know, so yeah, there, there's, there's, time-wise, there's quite a bit of work involved in this. And I just want to say on the green team, this is our first time through doing this. We have a small number of people on our green team. And our focus right now is the documentation. But once we've, you know, qualified and gotten those certification in place. I can see us expanding our green team and including. I could see including someone from the planning board and from some of our other advisory boards. And I mean, I can see our green team expanding and becoming more visionary in the future. But for now, for this year, our focus is pretty much on doing the documentation work. Does that answer your question, Linda?
Who are, who are the four members?
Myself, Jen Karsic, Barbara Buddha, and Rachel Linden. And, and the, the three of us, Rachel's not working on the documentation, but the other three of us are.
Thank you.
So anyways, as far as some of the other actions for doing. The, we, the community outreach and education. We have an excellent EC newsletter. If you're not signed up for it, I strongly recommend signing up for this. This is an excellent newsletter. And that's one of our actions. The EC webpage has been building. There's a lot of good information there. Including, there is also a presentation on stormwater management and site, as part of doing site reviews. That presentation involved Jen Coffey of ANJAC. And a professor from Rutgers. I thought it was really well done. And I wish we had advertised it more widely with our board members. A particularly good audience for that presentation would have been our land use board members. And to my knowledge, not too many people participated. But that presentation is still up there on the EC website if you're interested. So I would encourage you to take a look. On the food category, our community garden is worth, is getting a lot of points, extra points because it's organic. We did the first time ever winter farmer's market this year. And that was terrific. I don't know, hopefully you went. We're hoping to do it again next year. And we're getting extra points for that because it's accessible, handicapped accessible, primarily because of the proximity to the train station. Under natural resources, we're getting points just simply for having an environmental commission. We do, we already do the site review. The EC participates in site reviews. We are looking at this environmental assessment ordinance. I don't think we meet that now, but this is something I like to talk. Offline or at a separate meeting with our professionals about. And then we do have a tree protection ordinance, so we'll be getting points for that as well. Under public information and engagement, you can see the list there. I did want to just give you an example of. There's a checklist for improved public engagement and planning and zoning. And if you could bring that up, Jim. This is one of, some of the actions have checklists, so this one has a checklist. And if you go through it, you can see we do most of these things already. We publicize the annual list of meeting days. We probably, we have a place on our website for agendas, the minutes. We do have a place, that's, that's a gap we need to fill in there. The, the meeting agendas are clearly and concisely written. The one thing I would add there, and I, I've, I've noticed this over the years. It's recommended to include the address of the property, not just the block and lot number, and we're doing that. And I remember back when we were not, and it was confusing. So that's an example of an improvement that's been made over the years. That's right in line with the suggestions. The one thing about the rules for citizen input, I don't think we have that in writing. So that's something I may be in touch with Ed about and perhaps run up by the board. To make sure we're all on the same page on that. And then you have to do two of the following four. On the four A. I, I take every opportunity I can to encourage residents to sign up. To receive the planning board and board of adjustment agendas in their inbox. You know, not every town offers that service, so that's something for us to push with residents. We offer it, but a lot of residents don't know about it. On the back of that page. Let's see here. Board meetings are live streamed or recorded. We were posting planning board meetings, videos for a while. Do you have an update on what the status of that is, Jim? Are we, are we planning to continue doing that on a regular basis or? Do you know?
I, I thought we were doing it, but I guess I'll have to do some more follow-up on that. Because that is, is the, you know, there's a guy that it goes through and gets posted, correct, or they get cleaned up?
Yeah, okay, so we'll have to check on that back at. The Township Committee and we, we, there's a couple posted. We're just getting started with this. And this is, this is a really great thing to post the meetings. But we're sort of just beginning it and I, I don't think we quite have the, you know, the, the routine down yet. So that, that's something that, that we need to, to work with. And then I did want to highlight, you get five additional points for doing one of those items under number five. And we're going to get the five additional points for the visioning session that we did last week. And I, I will say, for me, that was just a milestone. I thought it was really interesting, really well done. It's the first time I've ever seen us do anything like that, where people broke into small groups. There was conversation, dialogue, information sharing. And then the groups came back and shared a summary of their, you know, their findings with the large group. And it was really interesting. And I can see why you get extra points for that, and I would like to see us do more of that in the future. So from this, this checklist, a lot of this stuff we do. And there's just a few loose ends to fill in in order to complete this. So that's just an example. And I did want to also just mention the Sustainable Land Use Pledge, which was the other document. That I, another example of something, this one, this overlaps the purview of this board. So are you able to pull that up, Jim?
Thought it is up, make them wrong. It's up on my screen, you know, is it up or no?
I don't see. I see the original list of actions. Anyway. Okay, well, we can, we can do without it. This was, this is what's called a priority action. So as part of getting certified at the bronze level, you have to do at least two priority actions. And this is one of our priority actions. And it basically is a statement of, you know, sort of high-level values that we're committed to. As a, as a community. So for example, we're committed to support regional cooperation. We believe in the value of communicating with the, you know, our neighbors, our neighboring municipalities. We're committed to giving a variety of transportation choices. And especially emphasizing, you know, alternative possibilities to cars. And encouraging people to walk and bike and make it easier for people to do that. We, we are committed to preserving our natural resources. And as part of doing this, I, I, it, it was news to me that we actually had, do have, and Jim, maybe you can confirm this. We do have a, a large document, a natural resources inventory that's available in hard copy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I'll be in there soon to take a look at it. And that's, that's an important resource for this board. It's sort of a, it's an inventory of the natural resources in our town. And by this pledge, we're pledging to update that natural resources inventory as we go along. We're committed to a mix of land uses, to a mix of housing options, to green design. And to, you know, putting our municipal facilities when we can. In places that enhance walkability, bikeability, access to public transit to the extent that we can. But anyway, these, this is just a, a pledge that from a high level highlights some of the values we take into consideration when we make land use decisions. So those are just a couple of examples. And we're going for the bronze certification this year. We're focusing mostly on stuff that we already do. If in the future we go for a higher level, we may be, you know, stretching and looking at stuff we don't already do. But I will say, I, I find Sustainable Jersey to be an excellent resource. For background information, sample documents, examples of what other towns have done. And if you're interested in learning more about it, I, I encourage you to go on the website. It's, it's a really great resource. And by getting certified, it does open the doors to being eligible to apply for their grants as well. So that is my presentation. And if anyone has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to hear your thoughts.
Kathy, I have a comment that's related partially to the Sustainable Jersey Initiative. And partially to other things that happened tonight and the visioning. Exercise for the Madison Avenue Corridor. And I would suggest to the Township Committee. And I would suggest to the township committee that um one of our, one of the challenges is going to be turning resident comment into appropriate ordinances with, with respect to land use. So the, uh, I believe there were quite a few comments from the visioning session that reflect the, the views of the residents, or at least the, the more outspoken residents. And um, the ordinances don't permit um don't permit this board the freedom that, that it would need to have to, to bring those uh views into fruition. Sorry, I'm being a little incoherent tonight. I thought I was. You know, it, it comes down to the ordinances, you know, Rick By said it best, you know, the, the, the ordinances constrain us. Um, we, and uh so how do you change the ordinances to reflect the will of the people for what kind of a community they want? And that, that's, it takes careful thought. And I think um, one thing that might be considered as part of that process is to to consider drafting um ordinances or at least outlines of, of prospective ordinances and exposing them to the public prior to their intro, their formal introduction uh, by the township committee. Because I find that process, although I'm sure it's required by law, to be um, very cumbersome one. Um, in one meeting, the township committee passes the introduction of an ordinance. And then in the following meeting, it allows public comment, but at the time the public comment is allowed. The ordinance cannot be changed in a significant way. It would have to be reintroduced. And that, that has, that has caused um problems in the past, and I think it will cause problems in the future. Some, something, some more work upfront to allow public input into the ordinances as they're being considered and crafted would be an improvement in my.
Yes. I, I agree. And, and the process that you're um highlighting there. Figuring out ways to give people input or, or at least understand what's going on more upfront. And then if you do have changes, being able to make them before you have to redo the whole thing and resubmit everything. Um, that's a, that's a theme that I see permeating a lot of these actions. You know, there's a, there's a, a high value uh in the sustainable jersey materials, and I totally agree with it. On the importance of finding ways to uh make sure that the public is informed and engaged. And um, now this is a, what you just cited, George, I think is a good example. And I do think it's challenging to, to start where we were with the people's comments and fast forward but through some process and end up with ordinances that reflect people's input, but you know, we're starting the process and we're beginning the journey and I, I'm really uh glad to see that and I, I, I thought a lot of good suggestions came out of uh that meeting last week. You know, certain things I can see going into an ordinance, like people talked about, they like the big setbacks. They, they like the tree line streets. They like the, the, the roadway to be walkable and bikeable. So there were the beginnings of things that could translate into um ordinance possibilities. But I, I, I agree with you on the need to um involve people more up more and earlier in the process of um creating some of the things that we do.
I'd like to mention that, you know, obviously the public input is important, but the uh property owners' input is, is uh equally as important. Owners have, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars invested and, you know, the market drives uh, you know, a lot of uh, you know, what can go in there. I mean, that's uh you know, I'm sure the owner of the TD Bank, you know, was looking, you know, for a tenant for quite a while. So I mean, there's a lot of factors that uh, you know, come into play on, on that.
There are. I totally agree with you. And to me, that's part of um, you know, providing full information so everybody understands what's going on. The market forces are a, a key part of uh, you know, determining what happens.
And also I'll add that um, in June, we'll be talking about our master plan and master planning in general, how that might relate to ordinances and, and vision for the township and where we stand with that. So I think if we look at we spend some time, you know, looking at the master plan, understanding what it does and its relationship to everything else that we're talking about. It might be helpful to, to look at that document as a vision as well as for example, the, with the corridor study, I think the relationship there, um, something we can look at favorably in this respect.
Yes, there's a direct correlation between the type of visioning activity that we started last week and, and, and the master plan. We, we have that on the docket for June, right? Um, Ed?
Vision, we did think we'll get that in June, Jim, or is it too early enough?
Yeah, we had to talk to Paul, and I think it depends on what's uh, you know, cooking with the applications.
And with whether we're going to be live. Which will be our next topic. Is anything you want to add to this or any other questions for, for Kathy on this? This is an excellent presentation. And it really helps us understand you know, where we could be going, where we should be going, and where we are going and what things might um, you know, happen in the future.
Yeah, and I just, I see it, I, I, like I said at the beginning, an important sort of theme for me is that a lot of the stuff we're working on, you know, whether it's environmental stuff or transportation stuff. It, there's overlap in the um, in the content with different boards. And so I'd like to see us um, work to you know, communicate our efforts and keep in touch with each other and find ways to, you know, to, to collaborate more closely.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. It was a great presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
And thank you for all your work on this. You, I, I can't imagine the hours you put into this.
This is a lot of work. I'll just say our first deadline is May twenty second. So we turn in everything we have. They give us feedback. And then we have until August, I don't know, the middle of August to like fix everything up and complete everything. And then the final absolute, you know, drop dead date is um, November. So that's when we'll find out if we meet the requirements, and we're very optimistic that we will. And we have plenty of stuff we do that we're not applying for certification for. We pick the stuff that's also the easiest to compile the documents for and do the write ups for. So um, anyway, so far, so good and uh, thanks, everybody. I'm glad. You know, we're in it together here.
Hey, thank you. So the next item, um, Jimmy, you want to pull the board?
Yeah, so uh, we've been talking about going back to uh in-person meetings and wanted to talk to all the board members and just get some uh, you know, feedback, just make sure that everyone is comfortable, you know, going back to a uh in-person session. There's been some discussion amongst the uh, the attorneys between the uh, the planning board and the board of adjustment. And the, the, the plan would be to have uh, what's known as a hybrid meeting where uh, there would still be a Zoom uh element where someone could watch the move, uh, watch the uh, watch the movie, watch the uh, the board meeting uh, from home. Uh, but they would not be uh, allowed to participate. Uh, you would have to come into the uh, into the meeting uh, in, in, in order to participate and ask questions. Um, the, and the, the reason for that is the uh, the board attorneys felt it was too um, easy for someone to challenge a board action uh, with, with the hybrid where uh, someone from home could ask questions. Uh, they could say there's a, there was an issue with uh, you know, their audio or connectivity. Um, so the uh, the attorneys felt it was best to uh, do the hybrid that would be in person. Uh, if you have questions or concerns, uh, but you could, uh, the public would still have the ability to uh, join a meeting via Zoom to uh, to uh, to watch the proceedings. But I don't know any, you know, any board members that have questions or concerns about going in person. We do have to do some uh, you know, some special notice. So uh, you know, wanted to get some feedback from the board. See that uh, Mayor Jeffrey's got his hand raised?
Thanks, Jim. Um, yeah, I, I fully support us return, our return, and I'm hoping it's soon as I updated the board earlier this year. We are upgrading the teleconferencing equipment, not only in the committee room there. Um, but also in the other conference room, and we're optimistic that that work will be completed um, the coming weeks, hopefully before or around June timeframe. But um, just as a caveat, kind of piggybacking on the hybrid um, model that Jim was talking about, but requiring in-person comments. The township committee did have issues when we were during redevelopment hearings last year, particularly with Mount Campbell with the hotel proposal where tech issues per prevented us from continuing the meeting and having to renotice and restart. Um, and I think that will be incredibly burdensome and onerous for the planning board and the board of adjustment that they feel the same. If there are tech issues and, you know, while we all have now become used to commenting from home. I think it's in the best interest of the planning board and the land use boards to maintain our schedules and try to do the safest thing possible so that we're not uh, prone to legal challenges if there are tech issues, whether they're on our side or on the commenter's side, so. I am looking forward to hopefully being back in June. I hope we're able to. Um, and I hope uh, you know, I'd invite the board to, to, I hope they feel the same way and um, again, I, I think commenting in person is, 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 while it's not perfect, I think it's the safest bet for us.
Mr. Coinlet, do you have your hand raised?
Still showing you're on mute, George.
All right. Um, yeah, I'm surprised by this. Uh, I am not in favor of returning to um, a requirement that in order to be a full participant in the meeting, you have to be present in person. I, COVID is on the increase uh, rather than on the decrease. Uh, currently, it may not be increasing to a real high level. Uh, it's hard to know. But there are going to be members of our community who are uh, who continue to be nervous. There are members of our community who are immunocompromised that are going to be nervous for a long time. And uh, and I'm nervous about uh, coming in and being in what might be a, a large um, crowd. The meetings sometimes will be sparsely attended. Sometimes they'll be heavily attended. It's hard to predict. Uh, but I would prefer to have the option to uh, to participate remotely uh, whenever I feel that that's what the best, uh, the best thing for me and my personal health. And I think a lot of other people would feel the same way.
To clarify, George, I believe you would be able to, you'd be able to participate remotely.
But a member of the public would not be able to participate.
They can participate, but if they wanted to have full testimony, they would be at the dais or at the podium in person.
So, so we board members would have more rights than the, than the public would in terms of um, being able to protect ourselves.
I mean, it's, it's the, up to the public to decide if they want to be there or not. Um, they could always provide written testimony too, I believe, if they wanted to provide a comment. But this is just, this is what we're having, we're having discussion now. I mean, if the board doesn't want to go back at all, we don't have to. We're just looking into trying to prevent issues that we've already experienced from being hybrid or from having virtual testimony.
We could give it a try. We could see how many members of the public complain uh, or what they're, what the nature of their complaint is. But I suspect that some people would, would complain. I guess that's, that's all I have to say for now.
And I, I, Mark, I would just want to confirm with the attorneys, you know, that they were in agreement on the board members participating, uh, you know, remotely. And I, I would say that a uh, a member of the public could not submit written comments uh, because the uh, the board needs to have the ability to ask uh, ask questions. I, I don't know.
Cross-examine technically.
Yeah, if you can't cross-examine a letter, you need to cross-examine the person. So uh, you know, written comments are not uh, an option from my understanding. Kathy Wilson, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify what, what the proposal that you're making is that is that if you're a member of the public and you, you want to either ask questions or make comments, you have to come in in person.
Correct. That's what the, the attorneys recommended from both boards.
I can, I can, I, I know this is a hard juggling act, but I can just, I, the, the situation I foresee is somebody is um, watching and they decide then based on what they hear that they have questions or comments. And then they're not able to do it because they're not in person. So I, to me, that would be a consideration to add to the mix as well. It, it, and the, another question I had is, I, I think from the past, I understood our professionals to be saying that that, that we could not have hybrid. It had to be either, I mean, that we, we could not allow like some people to be in person and some people to be online uh, um, and still participate. It, it, am I understanding that right? Or is this part of what we're just trying to work out our own solution?
Are you saying from the board member's perspective?
No, I'm saying, I, I, I I, I don't know. I, I, I mean, I've understood our professionals in the past to be saying that that hybrid meetings, like we're, where members of the public could either be online or in person were not allowed by law. And I, I'm asking if, if I, if that's correct or if that's changed. I know some of those things have changed with COVID.
I mean, we're, we're using the term hybrid, but if you're, if you're coming in remote as a member of the public, you would not be able to participate in the meeting, could only observe the meeting. You know, that's my understanding from the attorneys, and I don't know if that's a, a law or I, I believe it's more related to the concern of um, you know, creating an, an appealable situation. Making it uh, you know, too easy to, for someone to appeal.
Yes, I would agree with that, just because the technology is kind of difficult just to get everybody coordinated at the same time. Usually there's lag or people disconnect. And then it is unfair to members of the public or the board at that point.
So what you're saying is if somebody wanted to participate, but they were either they had tech problems or there was some tech problem at the township's end, that we would have to stop the meeting and and continue at another date?
Right, because it could be problematic for due process considerations, just because that person wasn't able to express their position when they should be entitled to do so.
And the solution to that is to have in-person meetings. You know, the, in, you'd have to be in person in order to ask questions or to uh, you know, issue comments.
So, but I mean, that's essentially how we've been operating. Is that because of some special provisions under the COVID laws that we've been able to do this? Now with the.
I believe so. Isn't there some special?
Laws issued during or executive orders issued during COVID that were ever shifting.
I think it was allowed is that either all of the board members are available in one spot, other online. In this case, we're in person and online, but the board members are also participating online. We can't have half of the public online and half of the public remote, or I'm sorry, in person.
Well, I mean, what you're proposing is to have people from the public be remote who do not wish to participate. They just want to observe. Right, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I I, I can understand why this would be the solution you're proposing. I don't think it's ideal, but I also get that there's, it's hard to come up with an ideal solution, given all the considerations.
Linda, your hand raised? Linda, your hand raised?
Yes, um, just to two comments. Um, one is that um we've had our share of technical uh problems with the meetings that have been remote over the course of the last couple of years. Some pretty egregious, as you pointed out. So I have a preference for being back in person um and having um both the applicants and their professionals and our professionals in person, plus whatever members of the public have interest in the application um that's being heard. I will add that um we are dealing with the same question on the school board. And our decision for the school board was to go in person uh for our meetings uh with comments and questions. We are not offering a hybrid option um for people just to observe. So um, you know, we we were struggling with the same issue about how do you have some people online and some people in person? And and so we opted not to offer the hybrid uh situation at all, although personally, I like the extended reach where people can watch and listen uh to data straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak. So um, I'm okay with doing the hybrid, but I think it is problematic to try to do participation uh remotely as well as in person. It just gets really, really cumbersome. And um I do fear, even though we're going to have new technical equipment, uh, there's, there's no guarantees that we wouldn't suffer some um issues with that as we have in the past going forward. Uh, my other question, I guess, has to do with folks who may feel reluctant to uh come back in person. And my question is, if it were delayed beyond June, would it be helpful? Uh, you know, if we went to July instead or August um for a return to in-person? So we can see the sort of the rhythm and trend of what's going on with the COVID situation. Um, would that, would that ease some concern or not?
Uh, with Mr. Chairman, would you? Okay, if I speak on that, since I was the first to express the most concern. Uh, it would not necessarily help me to, I I don't feel that I could commit to a date certain in the future, July or August or September, when I would feel comfortable uh going back in person. And a lot would depend on my my own personal situation. For example, if I were planning to go on a trip with family members, uh which I'm planning to do at the end of this year, um, I might want to not have much exposure to anyone for a while, say, a week before that trip um in order to minimize the chance that I would have to um drop out of the trip uh or uh risk exposing my family members. So I think that's the kind of thought process that many people are going to be applying um who are worried about the disease and about the endemic nature of of the disease. Uh, one other thing, while I have the floor, I guess I will say is that the meeting structure that's being proposed is not what I would call a hybrid meeting. Uh, it's a in-person meeting where people can view uh can view the meeting as it's happening, as though they were watching C-SPAN, right? So C-SPAN shows things live, C-SPAN shows things the next day. Um, we put up a recording of our proceedings uh a day later or a week later. They can watch it then, or they can watch it live, but it's not really a hybrid meeting because there's no participation remotely. And 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 I don't really understand why the legal analysis is that um if you allow one person to attend in person, one member of the public to attend in person, then you can't uh then su- suddenly the people who are not attending in person uh pose a greater risk than um than they do today. Today, everybody's um, nobody is attending in person. All the members of the public are remote. So why is the uh concern not present uh that that someone would object that they that the technology failed them and they couldn't, they couldn't connect?
You're talking right now, George, and we can't hear you. So I I it was ironic that that just happened at that time, but uh
Okay.
We've had public meetings where we've had to stop and restart from scratch, right? We've had Zoom where we lost audio, we've lost video, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different issues that have come up. And it's uh, you know, it it is a problem.
But it's not a problem that's related to the fact that you're you're, you would be allowing some members of the public to attend in person. So so you're saying there is a legal risk today that you would be eliminating by requiring anyone who wants to comment uh or ask questions to be here, to be in the meeting room in person. Is that true?
I think it eliminates that risk, yes.
I concur.
Risk exists right now. Okay, all right, thank you.
I did want to follow up, and if we have uh counsel weigh in, is it true that for the planning board? So all it takes is a quorum to be in person, but can we not have members of the planning board participate remotely if they are feeling under the weather that day?
The concern with that is having the technology available, so if it's not set up all the time, then that person who wants to be remote might not be possible. I know some municipalities do allow that on special circumstances where the member of the board can call in or participate by Zoom, but if you can imagine when there's exhibits being shown, it might be kind of hard for that person to see them if they're not all televised or recorded.
I would just add that we will, we should be having that capability. We're putting in large monitors in the room. We're putting in high-definition cameras in the room too, specifically for this purpose, so that one members of the board, one of the members of the board or the governing body and other boards do not wish to come in, like George, you said, which is absolutely rational. And this is what we have to think about in the future, um trying to be able to allow you to participate, or if you're on vacation, um not being there so long as there's a quorum on the dais uh in person. That's why I say hybrid, George, because if we have, if we do have members being remote, if they're not comfortable coming in or can't make it, then it would be a hybrid meeting, uh at least for the governing body members or the planning board members.
Okay, thank you.
So so no, electronic participation has always been permitted, but it's usually discouraged when the board is hearing applications, only because of the issue I mentioned with exhibits. But if we're just doing master plan review or something like that, then yeah, that's definitely permitted.
But participation in a hearing is probably potentially problematic.
Correct.
I've been doing fine so far.
Okay. I was gonna say, that that's news to me, and I'm a little concerned about that. Um, but obviously, it's the law. But at least for the the Township Committee, we are planning for allowing any member, should they not be comfortable to come in, to be remote in perpetuity.
Yeah, I think we we have to discuss that with uh, you know, Rich and Steve, just so everyone's on the same page. And and that's Rich Oller, the Board of Adjustment. We just want to have some consistency with the Land Use Boards.
Do we need to agree on a month tonight or this discussion?
We do kind of need to know if we're going to do it, because uh I think Sonya would do the advertising needs to go out soon. So uh, you know, I don't know if you want to do a vote on it or how how you want to work it or if it gets pushed off. Uh, that's up to you guys.
The the proposal or suggestion by the Township Committee, I think, is June. Um.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would recommend later, because I I think the vendor's going to be in the room at June doing all the upgrades. Um, it's not clear when we're, we're hopefully awarding or putting out the bid at the May uh Township Committee meeting. So um, you know, if we want to go in with all the with the full capabilities, I would recommend maybe late, the second June meeting, if there is a second one in June, or the first July meeting might be safer.
The uh, the July meeting is uh seven eighteen, so that would give you the entire month of June for installation if it were needed by the vendor.
You know, it'd be helpful to have the uh direction now, you know, so we can do the advertising. You know, so if we just want to shoot for July, I, you know, I think that's helpful.
One, one, what, do we have to have a consistency, not only across the land use boards, but with the Township Committee as well? Or 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 the, just the land use boards consistent with each other?
I think it's just land use boards because it's more of a legal proceeding, but uh I defer to the attorneys on that.
Jim's correct. So with the, I believe with the council meetings, anyone could submit comments in writing as well, as well as questions. Whereas the land use boards, that's not okay, because we have to be able to cross-examine the person speaking.
So the next Board of Adjustment meeting is May twenty-third, is that right?
Yes.
So, jump right on the foot of that.
Yeah, so it would be helpful probably if we go with July.
With July.
Yeah.
We get the feedback from the Board of Adjustment.
I'm good to come in in person in July, and July eighteenth is our date.
I would be as well.
Um, I, me as well.
Me as well. All right.
Jesse, Rich, where you guys at?
I, July, it makes sense to me. I would, that would, I'd be okay with that.
This is Jesse. I think July would be fine.
Okay. I will talk to the Board of Adjustment and we'll uh keep everyone posted.
Okay. Anything else from you, Jim?
No, I don't.
Um, any other professionals or any other? Yeah, I'll get to that. Any other members of the board want to say anything?
Just uh, real quick, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to uh recognize Chief Nun, who's with us tonight. He's been working nonstop since probably Thursday afternoon. Um, as folks may know, there were two fires in the Township, one keeping him up probably the entire weekend. Um, it was a major fire in Fairchild, and he went into work today and then came here to sit with us tonight. Uh, Jim, I think you're at the Max Drive call too, but I just want to thank the chief for all his work, not only during the day, but at night and all other hours of the week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you too for your support and help.
And uh, Mark was there as well. Thank you. Thanks, you guys. Lot of work. Much appreciated.
Okay, great. So at this time, um, we'll open up the floor to any members of the public who would like to make any comments. Comments about anything. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Um. This will, we have no closed session, right?
Correct, no closed session.
So at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Chief Nun, second?
Second.
Second, Mayor Jeffrey. Own favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you in May sixteenth.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.